I want to remind everyone tonight that we will be taping this for a later showing on cable TV. This is one of the three meetings that we tape. And just to remind all the school committee members and people in the audience, the microphones pick up a lot of background noise. So be thoughtful before you make background noise, that's all I'm saying. All right, with that said, I'll call this meeting to order. And if you please follow me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Gorman?
Here.
Ms. Proctor?
Mr. Tang?
Here.
Mr. Fulmer?
Here.
Ms. Chapman?
Here.
Mr. Chapman?
Here.
Mr. Manolopoulos?
Mr. Duchesne?
Here.
Ms. Farquhar?
Here.
Ms. Madigan?
Mr. Belber?
Ms. Carr?
And Mr. Addy?
I declare that we have a quorum. We are now in session. I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded for future broadcasts. And if anyone else is recording the meeting, please let me know at this time. Let's see. Are there any public comments on the agenda? All public comments on the agenda will be limited to three minutes per guest. They must pertain to the agenda. And a timekeeper will be appointed to make sure that we keep within those bounds. Are there any public comments on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll move into recognitions and achievements, please. So tonight, we are lucky enough to have two of our honorary students with us. Daniel Wattman, who is from our programming web department, who is one of our students of the month, and also Robert Harris, who is one of our athletes of the month. So we're just going to begin with a short video of Julie Dunham and also our other two honorees, as well as one of whom is John Billups
Obstructed fuels.
And other three are supposed to come.
Hi, my name is Holpen Plattenberg. I'm from Townsend. My parents are Nancy and Frank, and I'm in the health assistant shop. I'm in National and Honor Technical Society. And I play volleyball, and I'm the varsity captain. And then I go to Bridges every Friday with my shop to volunteer with the residents to help them.
Hello, I'm Robert Paris. I'm from Pepperell. I'm in the vet assistant class. My parents are Donna and John. And every Thursday, I go to Evans Farm to volunteer at their farm. I work with dogs, cats, horses, you name it.
Hi, my name is John Magdalene Tuddy. I'm from Air. I'm from the plumbing shop. My parents are John and Ann. I want to be a journeyman plumber when I grow up and go to the Cape Cod Plumbing School.
So hi, I'm Danielle Wattman, daughter of Oslyn and Ronald Wattman. I'm from the town of Chelmsford, and I'm a senior in programming and web development. I'm part of a couple of clubs in this school, like the digital media club, culinary club, and the outdoors club, which is a new club this year. We're going to be going to a corn maze in late October, so that'll be a bunch of fun. And I really like it because I'm like known to be a programmer, and those people are more like indoors and stuff. So this is kind of out of my comfort level, but it's been a lot of fun. And after school, I'm going, I plan to be going on to college, probably for computer science. Not sure exactly where yet, but I'm thinking either like artificial intelligence or game design.
That was a Chelmsford student that was just mentioned. Yes. So Danielle, who's nominated by her physics teacher, she's a lago guru. Danielle earned a perfect score on her math SATs. It's great thing all from the school and at the top of her class. In addition, she was nominated by a second teacher, which is actually not that common, so obviously many people think very highly of her here. Mr. Gold, her programming web teacher, said she is a force to be reckoned with in the field of computer science. Her ability to learn new languages and apply them to projects gives her a superpower in our digital world. Look out for great things from Danielle in the fields of game development, cybersecurity, and machine learning in the near future. So obviously, she's very in touch with you. Good job, I don't know who came with you tonight.
Uh, this is your mom.
Congratulations. We also have one of our athletes of the month, Robert Paris. He is on our cross-country team. He has, he has come in first for the Vikings in every race, I believe, this year, correct? And then we had our, our friend of Michoacan 5K road race on Saturday, and he was the first Viking to come across the finish line. He was in second place overall. That was out of 107 runners, people age 14, probably all the way up until in their 70s, and he came in second place. So awesome job. Mr. Sullivan, his cross-country coach, has been so impressed with him this year. He said he's never had to get work harder than to see what he did from last year to this year is amazing. The effort he's put forth has just been fantastic. Nice job. I brought my father John, my mother Donna, and my senior Louis. I have a couple certificates for you, but I'll give those to you and turn it back over to the chair. Thank you. Like to move into the consent agenda? Oh, sorry. I skipped one. Student reps, please. Sorry. Getting ahead of myself to see if you can...
I'll go first. Hi, everyone, nice to see you again. I'm Abby Cronin, and I'm here to talk about kind of just what's going on in the student body and student government and things like that. So in the month of September, we always have our school-wide spirit week. It was pretty successful this year. We had a lot of fun. So how it works is each set of class officers gets to like pick a day for the week, and then Friday's traditionally always blue and white day for pep rally. So we had a lot of fun ones this year. We did silly sock day, twin Tuesday, celebrity day, then a color war where each class has a color, and we kind of challenge each other to see who in the class wore the most of that color. So we had a lot of fun. The sophomores were dominant in this competition, though. They won four out of the five spirit days, which is pretty impressive on their part. But when we moved into the pep rally, we played a lot of games this year. We have a loud contest. We played limbo, tug-of-war, and musical chairs. And with the exception of one tie that the seniors were a part of, we did win all the games this year, which is pretty awesome. And then it was also a big fundraising week for the senior class. We had our annual homecoming dance, which is a senior class fundraiser, and we raised over $1,100 for our class. We also reintroduced the penny wars. So that works is you drop pennies into your class's jar, and you try and drop like dollars, silver, change that will like cancel out that amount in pennies in other classes, which the seniors also won, and we raised $111 because we got to keep all the change from all the classes. So the seniors had a pretty good fundraising week. That week, we raised over $1,200 for our class, so we hope to put forth for senior week in prom, and we're looking for more fundraisers to do that I'll probably update on next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Brianna Schmoyer. Nice to see you guys again. I talk about clubs and some around the school things that she doesn't touch up on. So on clubs, a lot of clubs are fully active as they start doing fundraising and field trips there. Outdoors club took a trip, took a trip to Great Brook Farm and are now taking a trip to the, to have fun at a corn maze and pumpkin picking at Kondo's Farm. They have a goal of eight outings this year. Elections have just been decided, and the club sees a lot of seniors and sophomores active in it. Culinary club is planning on taking a chocolate-making trip in the near future. And horticulture club and culinary have teamed up to grow herbs in the garden. Somewhere else in the school, in the programming tech, the shop, they had a guest speaker come in to give a presentation and answer questions on cybersecurity. It was a huge hit. It was actually my father. So I helped organize that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, nice.
One more. My name's DJ, and I'm bringing you the athletics report. The Shobetech Athletics has been off to a slow start, but if you look at their records, however, the overall energy on teams is still lively and hopeful. The Vikings are still fighting for playoff positions in a few sports, and for those whose playoff dreams will not come to fruition, they are still competing hard to get the most out of their seasons and win their senior night competitions. Boy soccer has won two games in a row, bringing their overall record to three in it. They will play their senior night versus Minuteman this Thursday. Girl soccer has one win, nine losses, and three ties. They play their senior night October 28th against Murdochs. Volleyball has won six and lost nine of their matches. They have six games remaining on their schedule, so there is playoff hope. The team will take on Monty Tech on October 25th for their senior night. The golf team sits at one win and one loss, and they will be traveling for the league tournament this Friday. Chilling has braved the sun, wind, and rain to cheer football games, however, they haven't made it to the heart of their season yet. They have been training hard for their competition at Beurica High School on October 26th, and then again at Essex Tech November 3rd. Football has been plowing through their competition, outscoring opponents 167 to 34 in the last four weeks. They play a game this Friday against Greater Lawrence Tech at home in their military-themed game, where the team will raise money for the Wounded Warrior Project. The following week, they will play Keeve Tech for their senior night. The cross-country team just had a huge victory over Ling Tech, which improved the boys to a record of six wins and three losses, and the girls to one win and four losses. I'd also like to take a moment to congratulate Viking runners Robert Paris and Mason St. Pierre for their second and third place finishes, respectively, at the Shobetech's annual Haunted 5K, and freshman Julia Chamberlain on her first-place finish in the female 18-hour division.
And more appropriate now, thank you to the three students. I just want to add to the athletic report. I want to commend one of our students, John Frazier, who for four weeks in a row has phoned in the results of the game. Unfortunately, we couldn't carry it live on 980 WCAP as we intended because they rolled the games back to 4:30, and we go on the air at 7:00. But John has done a phenomenal job, and I'd like to think that he's brought a lot of luck to the team because by my count, they're undefeated right now. Did we have, we had one loss?
One loss.
The last three were wins, though. That's why. I started listening for the last three. So congratulations to the Viking football team, but especially to John Frazier. And is the game still at 4:30 this, this week, or?
Four.
Four? So we're going to stay the afternoons now?
Uh, yes.
Well, then I invite everybody to tune into 980 WCAP. At 7 o'clock, we kick off with John Frazier's recap of the game, and he does it quarter by quarter. Does a great job. So go Vikings.
Thank you. Any other questions before I move into the consent agenda? All set? Folks, you're all done.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your rest. Thank you very much. Thank you. How do I get to the next floor? At this time, I'm going to move into the consent agenda with Mr. Dyer, the secretary.
I move to approve the September 2019 accounts available warrant report in the amount of $960,309.21, and the September 2019 payroll warrant report in the amount of $890,683.6 for a total in warrant reports of one day, yes, $850,992.47.
Second? I'll second. Consent agenda has been read and seconded to accept it as presented. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you. And now we will move into action items. Karen?
I move to approve the minutes of the regular school committee meeting of September 10, 2019.
Second? We have a second. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you.
I move to accept the June 30, 2019 audit report as recommended by the budget and finance subcommittee.
Second? Motion's been made and seconded. Now I'd like to stop for a minute. We have a motion made and seconded. We're open for discussion. Sam?
I would encourage everyone to read that report, the general public. I think it's good that we're recording this particular meeting. That not only did Powers and Sullivan do a great job, but if I dare say so ourselves, we did too. So bravo to the administration, to the superintendent, and everyone. It's a, it's a report we can all be proud of. So I encourage people to, it's available, isn't it?
Yes, it is. Any other comments before I turn it over to Jeanie? Jeanie, would you like to introduce our guests?
That'd be my pleasure. Tonight, we have our auditor. He's a partner of Powers and Sullivan, it's Richard Sullivan, and he will give us a report on what he found while he was here.
Good evening. Thanks for having me tonight. What I want to do is kind of just take a few minutes of your time to tell you how the audit went, what we kind of do, so that you could be comfortable that there in fact was an audit, that we kicked the tires as appropriate, and give you a little idea of what I, how I thought the overall process went. As far as timing goes, this job went exactly the same as it did last year. We usually come in in the spring, and this time, we came in June 18th. We do a lot of things at June, in June, in the spring, that aren't necessarily important to the fiscal year end of June 30th. So for instance, we can look at, we do transaction testing, which means we look at the revenue cycle, the expenditure cycle, the payroll cycle. We pretty much select 25 transactions for every single one of them, and look for authorization, appropriation, proper classification of expenditures and revenues, and basically do a kind of a test to make sure, as we understand the internal controls are designed, they are in fact working as designed. And we had no issues with that. We also look at the budget, because that's something that's done annually. It's not necessarily specific to June 30th. We audit debt. We'll look at single audit. If there was a single audit this year, there wasn't. We'll look at certain things like, we'll do some analytics to make sure that we understand that our plan for year-end will in fact still take place, and then we prep for coming in after June 30th. We came in on August 5th of this year. The only reason I emphasize that date, that means that the books were closed less than 40 days after year-end. That's pretty impressive when I compare this district to my other clients. A lot of times, we can't get a general ledger from our clients until well into September. So the fact that they were, the books were able to be closed quickly is impressive. Just as impressive is the fact that we take, obviously, your software, I mean, your general ledger, we load it up in our software, which allows us to populate the financial statements. We didn't have any adjusting entries to make after we uploaded that, which to me tells me that the information that was given us, and also that you've been receiving on a contemporaneous basis, you know, you look at things, budget to actual, as you go through the year. I'm very confident the fact that the governing board was receiving information that was accurate at that time, too. And I'll tell you why. There's a little test that we do called journal entry testing. And what journal entries are, is a manual entry made by the accountant to say, I want to, instead of putting it in this bucket, I want to put it in that bucket. And we look for journal entries that are correcting errors. We look for journal entries that are correcting things that should have, didn't go right the first time, which by nature would indicate there's a possible design issue. We didn't find anything like that. The kind of, the kind of reclassifications are just the normal ones that occur in an accounting system throughout the year. So I just want to leave you with the thought process at the beginning of this, is that information was really good. The information we received was good, and the information you've been receiving, I believe, over the course of the year, was also accurate and good. So drafts were issued September 25th, and Jean was terrific in turning around, and we had the finals out by October 2nd. Last year, we were a little later, and I'm not sure if you remember, but we had to wait for some OPEB valuation, and we couldn't get it done as fast. That's the only thing that was holding it up. This year, we were able to streamline the process and get it done, which I was very happy about. So just to give you a little bit before I go in to talk about what we audited, as an auditor, one of the best things that can happen is I, we come in and our client is ready. And I call it audit ready, meaning that we, they know what we want because we sent checklist earlier, and we literally have a pile of information when we walk in the door. And usually, there's one or two of us, no, there's always two of us, maybe three of us, and the person in charge is responsible for dealing out all the work to be done. And having that inventory of work already there makes it so much easier to expedite the process to get things done. So when we go through cash, you can give cash to an assistant. You can give warrants payable to somebody else. We can do the OPEB, the pension, all those things, and it's just a streamlined process. You may have heard me use this term before, but I always consider ourselves the accounting marines. We come in and we try to get in and out as fast as possible. Couple of reasons. You don't want us hanging around anyway, because, you know, we're the auditors. But the other thing is that, you know, I'm also a businessman. So if I can get my job done faster, that means maybe my company can benefit from that by having other clients. And knock on wood, because of folks like you, we continue to get good clients. So her team was ready. I would say that they exhibited a sense of urgency when we were here. You know, we always try to ask a couple of questions that we haven't asked in the prior year. They were very responsive to that. Information was timely received, which means that they weren't fumbling around trying to find it. They could literally open up a drawer, pick out the folder, and give it to us. So I just wanted to get a feel that, in my opinion, you have a very good financial team here. That's something you can rely on. And I, to what the gentleman said earlier, that, that's, I think that's important. I'm not sure the actual report reflects that, because it's a bunch of numbers with a, with an opinion that we own that basically is all negative reassurances, but it basically tells you what you should be knowing. And in this report is the, the fact that, that your financial statements not only are in compliance with everything that needs to be in compliance with, but also shows that you had a decent year. I mean, Lord knows, your budget is not an easy process. It's a difficult thing to go through. I know, no, I don't know, but I'm aware of the, some of the situations and the stresses that occur when you're trying to put together this thing. And I think that you, what you get out of this, and with Jean's team, you end up with a good product in the end, and I'm very happy with the product, too, because it's kind of our names on it. As far as the balance sheet goes and your audit, realistically, a school district is not a complex environment. I mean, if you looked at your budget from year to year to year, there's minor increases, contractual increases due to, but there's not a lot of big changes. There's not a lot of ebb and flow. I mean, when you think about it, how much of your costs is personnel or personnel-related between salaries, fringe benefits, taxes, you know, there's so much there, retirement. But, you know, the biggest thing that I would say, from a risk standpoint, that we pay attention to is cash. You had $6.5 million in cash at the end of the year. As auditors, you beat the heck out of it, and we make sure it's right, and it was in fact right. Some of the other big payables, like bonds payable, that's easy. OPEB, we actually provide for you through an actuary. Pension comes from the middlesex county and teachers' retirement. So those are all just numbers that we kind of put together. But the idea of the, what you do and what you pay attention to is the actual budget-to-actual statement, and that's a really solid statement. It's in the back of the report. I'm not asking you to flip pages, but it's somewhere between pages 48 and 47, and it tells you exactly what you need to know. So I'm not going to talk about the actual report itself because, you know, the fluctuations, the analytics, all made sense to me. There was nothing unusual. But you want to talk about the audit results. The two pages I told you about earlier, which is the opinion, you know, the account, the auditor's opinion, was what we call a clean opinion. It's actually called an unmodified opinion, but it's a clean opinion in layman's terms. It means that everything in here is exactly the way it should be to conform with GAAP and the, and the GFOA and the GASB. I'm happy to report I have no issues relative to internal controls to tell you about. As a governing body, I think we would be concerned if I said to you that you have a design weakness or there's some flaw in the procedures. I didn't see any. I don't think there is, but I'm just saying to you, I mean, we, again, we're in the business of negative assurance. If you really read the opinion, we don't really say a lot. But the idea is, is that we didn't see anything that we think warrants to be, you'd be told. And I think that's very important. I will also once more say that we had great cooperation with the staff. I mean, Katie, who was out here, she would be here tonight, but she's actually on the North Shore at the moment. She, she was here, she was a senior on here. I apologize, I can't remember who the assistant was, but they were treated perfectly by the whole process, and we were very appreciative of that. Quick assessment of your financial activity. Again, I only focus on the budgetary schedule, which is on pages 46 and 47. You actually did a little better than anticipated. From a budgetary standpoint, you actually lost about $110,000. But when you look at your budget, you would anticipate using $450,000 of E&amp;D to balance the budget. Technically, that means that you came in better than you expected because you didn't use the whole $450,000, you used about $300 and something thousand of it, which means that your revenues came in higher, a little bit, and your expenses came in lower, a little bit. Revenue mostly chapter 70, and you had pretty significant investment income, which I was glad to see. And expenses came in lower mostly because you put money from the general fund budget into school choice. And I know that was a planned idea, because school choice, I'll talk about it in a second, went down about a million bucks, but you had a $3.9 million balance in the beginning, and now it's at $2.9 million. So that's why the general fund, I think, was, had a surplus. Had that transfer not been made, all of E&amp;D would have been used. So I don't think that's a problem because, again, you still have a fairly, not significant, but you have a substantial balance in your school choice at the end of 2019, which was $2.9 million. You had planned to use it. I think you planned to use some more of it this year, if I remember correctly, talking to Jean, maybe another $900,000 or something. Makes sense to me. All right, I get it. The other major fund that you had was a school building fund, which mostly was for the roofs. You have a deficit in that fund because you haven't fully gone out and borrowed for it yet of $1.4 million. That's anticipated, that's expected. I wouldn't worry about it. It's a, it's a fund in and of itself designed just to account for all the capital improvements you're making, most of which was the, the roof. I think there was also like another $400,000, $500,000 worth of medical equipment purchase for, what was it called, the workforce skills grant, and that was part of that, too. The other part of capital asset activity, in addition to that, was I have $1.8 million spent for the roof in 2019, and that's what created the deficit of 1.4. That's kind of a synopsis of the financial statements themselves. There's another report in the back here, which is a two-page report. It's called Compliance to Laws and Regulations as It Applies to Federal Awards. It basically says that you complied in every way, shape, and form you're supposed to. There are certain elements of laws that you're supposed to follow in relation to grants, and also the preparation of the financial statements, and you did so. You did not have a single audit this year. There has been a single audit in the past, I don't know if you remember that term. If you spend more than $750,000 of federal awards, you have to go through what's called a single audit, which means we take one of those grants. Most of the time, it's like a special education grant. I'm not sure it would be here, but we go and we audit that and drill down on it and issue a separate report, and that, that was not necessary. So that won't be around until you exceed $750,000. The management letter, I use the term thin to win because it's extremely light, and the reason is, is that I honestly believe that over the years that you've been a client of ours, we've brought some issues up that needed to be discussed and documented, and they were resolved, usually in the next year. Everything from doing a fraud risk assessment to disaster recovery plans, to the things that I think are important. We brought this up, and it's kind of like an informational conbrent, and it's only because we've seen more of our clients get hit for Bitcoin ransoms by cybersecurity. So the idea is, if you have a cybersecurity process and you know what you're doing, that's great. I'm just saying here that I'm not aware of one being documented, and I would say if you could document it so that if the person with the institutional knowledge knows what to do for cybersecurity, and they're no longer there, you pick up a piece of paper, you know who to call, what to do, when to do it, that type of thing. Just like, just like a disaster recovery plan. So that's not, that's, that management letter is not a big deal for me, but it's more informational to you to say, maybe you should think about this. to you to say, maybe you should think about this. And what, 15 minutes of talking sums up about $200 worth of work. So.
Any questions from the committee?
Yes, so is there anything other district, regional school districts are doing that are for best practices that you think we should incorporate over the next couple of years?
No, I think they could follow you. I do have a few that I think the regional school districts do a very, very good job, and I think you are one of them. And, and, now, I'm, I'm the accountant side, I'm not the programmatic side, all right? So I pay attention to what I look for from the finance side of it. I talked about quick turnaround, sense of urgency, no issues getting information, and also policies. This school does a good job of that. I, I have some regional school districts who don't do as well, but this one does a good job of that.
Thank you.
Lawrence, please.
Mr. Chairman, did you look at the amount and the percentage that we have in stabilization? And do you have an opinion of where we are on stabilization?
I can't remember. There's a number in here. I'm pretty sure there's a number in here. I'm not sure what it is. Give me one second. Your stabilization fund was $1.4 million at the end of, in June, at the end of June 19. That's part, we, we actually classify that as part of your overall fund balance. Your overall fund balance at the time was 2.8. So your unassigned, I should say, your unassigned fund balance was 2.4. So 1.4, that was your stabilization fund. Do I have an opinion on it? I think that's a good, good amount to have, because when you look at $2.4 million reserve on a $13 million budget, give or take, that's, that's, that's a nice percentage. I don't know what the percentage is off the top of my head. I might have a thing in here, hold on. I don't have the percentage. I apologize. But that, it's a sizable amount of your overall budget. I think it's, I think it's good.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, just one last question on the cybersecurity. Policies are one thing. Do you, I noticed a couple of the municipalities have been hacked in the Bitcoin and
My hometown.
Yeah, ransom stuff, that age. So are, are organizations, either municipalities, school just, school districts or towns, ensuring against that?
You can. I believe Maya.
We are ensuring against that.
Okay, good. All right, good.
So that'd be, that'd be better than a policy, in many ways, which is
One way to have, you should have both.
Both, yeah, absolutely.
You know, but you're right. At least to be insured against it is a big deal.
True, thank you.
We're moving into an area that's outside the realm of the meeting on cybersecurity. We'd like to stop that discussion. It stays within the Security Council at the School Committee level. Any other questions? Sam, please.
Just one more, just a, a simple answer will suffice on this. Between the stabilization fund and the other available funding, I know you didn't have the percentage, but I, I interpret that as a healthy balance, but not an overly aggressive balance. Would you agree with that, that it's healthy, but it's not excessive?
I, I, I wouldn't classify as excessive, because I'm a conservative accountant. I believe that you need reserves, and that reserves can be earmarked for certain things. When I, I just try to be quick. Stabilization fund, I think, is a unique animal where I like to see what I call one-time expenditures against one-time money. Now, the stabilization fund, to me, is the type of thing that maybe instead of borrowing, you use it for a capital purpose. Or you've got this one-time expenditure coming through the, through the, for the year that's not going to occur in the subsequent year. What I don't like to see with reserves, as a general rule, and particularly stabilization, is that you use them to beat, to, to meet the requirements of what I call structural elements of your budget that are going to be year after year after year, because eventually it'll be weeded away to nothing.
Thank you. I agree.
You all set? I was talking, I just want to make sure I have everybody. Anyone else? Karen?
I just want to thank Jean and her team for a great job again.
Hooah. Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate it very much. So the motion was made to accept the June 30th audit report. We've had discussion, we've had a great review, and I appreciate the comments and the going forward. If we had a second, I'm going to move to a vote. Let's see further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you.
I move to approve the 2020-2021 program of studies as recommended by the Curriculum Subcommittee.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded. Do we have discussion?
I'd like, could I do something? I'd like to refer to the memorandum that was presented instead of going through the whole program of studies. In the Curriculum Subcommittee, we went through this line by line, discussed it, and we're in total acceptance of this and bring it to you for a final vote.
Any other questions or concerns?
Diddle.
Seeing none, I'll move it to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you.
I move to formally sign the proclamation celebrating 50 years of excellence at Neshova Valley to be framed and displayed on the school's campus.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded. Does someone have a pen? Black pen. I'm going to send this around. I can tell you that when Dr. Pidger and I visited Littleton, we were warmly received. They graciously read it on TV for us, and it really was a kind of a nice moment. And I really do appreciate Littleton. I know it's gone in other towns, and the same reaction has been given. Our hopes are to actually frame this one, but with all the ones that were taken back from the towns into one frame as a historical reference to the 50 years. So a motion was made on the proclamation, and it's seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? No abstentions. The motion carries. Thank you so much.
I move to approve the updates to the 2019-2020 Student Handbook Section C, special programs to include internships and cooperative placement as part of an overall school and career program.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded. I think we've had some discussion on that. Lawrence?
I just was going to summarize that for people who weren't at the Policy Subcommittee, because it's, it's, comes down to, there aren't enough co-op opportunities. Some companies aren't going to invite co-op, but they might invite internship, and it gives the students real-world experience, and it might lead to something. No reason not to, really.
Any other questions, concerns, or discussion needed? Karen?
I just want to point out this was approved in the Policy Subcommittee.
I'll move to the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you.
I move to approve supporting the MASC resolutions as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, before we go into open discussion. We, we sent out a email to everyone to, hopefully they have the time to read the resolutions that would be voted on at the 74th Annual Meeting at the MAS, MASC and MASSS Joint Conference coming up in November 8th, which quite a few of us will be going to. Mr. Ayers is our delegate, and he will be casting a vote on the decision we make tonight.
And I would like to point out that the members of the MASC Resolution Committee met on June 27th of 2019 to consider these that were proposed. There are nine resolutions forwarded by the Resolution Committee, and they were all approved by the Board of Directors. I have gone through each of these, and in my opinion, they are all good resolutions that this committee can support, and I recommend them to you.
I'd like to be able to call for a vote on all the amendments, all the resolutions, unless someone has a problem with any particular resolution. Sam?
Just want to encourage everyone to support Dawn's view that these should all be voted on as one block, as the alternate, and as the delegate for many, many years. This can easily get bogged down, which is why the Resolutions Committee did such a good job this year. And a lot of resolutions didn't make it. So it's not as if everybody that proposed a resolution had it brought forward. Believe me, they spent many, many months going through everything. These that survived have their total support. I think it was pretty unanimous. There wasn't a mi, this year there was not a minority opinion. So I think we do well to just support every one of these resolutions.
Thank you. Any further comments? Do I have the blessing of the committee to have one vote for all the resolutions?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion's been made, it's seconded. We will be voting on all the resolutions in one vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you.
I move to approve the purchase of items over $5,000 as presented and approved by the Equipment and Facilities and Budget and Finance Subcommittee.
Second. Motion's been made, seconded by Mike Tang. Thank you. Is there any comments or concerns? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you.
I move to declare the Bobcat as surplus and request for disposition in the most appropriate manner, as recommended by the Equipment and Facilities and Budget and Finance Subcommittee.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you. We went through a lot of work this evening with these action items. Appreciate it very much, folks. Shows that everybody's been doing their homework. So thank you. And for the folks that are outside, listening to this and watching this on cable, all of these action items come forward from the various subcommittees that do all the legwork and hard work, working with the administrative team to help us make good decisions based on what student needs are needed. So a lot of this has been recapped, but we have to formally vote most of this so that it goes into a public record. Principals report.
Thank you. For tonight, we have a couple of our cluster chairs representing to let you know about the successes and experiences of their clusters. We'll do this alphabetically, so we'll start with Mr. Massa.
Excellent.
By Massa, love him.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
I have a handout. It's exciting.
Please take one.
So I'm from Massa on the Cluster Chair of the Social Studies and Electives. The electives include soci, sorry, I'm trying to get it here. The sociology and psychology electives, as well as Spanish and music. So here's a long list of things. I'm going to talk about a few of them, all the things that I think are worth noting. And then I wanted to show you something a student had made last year, because the last time I spoke to you was May, and we had our final projects, and they did something really cool in class. A kid did something amazing that's worth noting. So I'll actually start from the back, starting with Spanish first and then music, and I'll talk about social studies. So Spanish, since last year, they went on a couple field trips. One was in Salem, Mass, in which they looked at murals all over the city. I was just in Salem this past Sunday. Those murals are actually pretty cool, pretty amazing. And they were able to bring back some of the ideas from the mural, the Greek mural in Senor Skewen's classroom regarding Spanish culture. They also went on a field trip as well to have Spanish with the tapas, and they plan on doing that again this year. Again, she tries to focus on kind of introducing the kids with the culture, as well as teaching them the contact. In regards to the music department, there are a few dates on there of different performances they'll be having and different additions that some of the students participate in the course will be participating in throughout the winter and spring of this upcoming year. I wanted to mention as well that our teacher, Laura Bemora, is using a new software called Soundcraft, and it's making music accessible for our kids, which is always a good thing, making the content more accessible to everybody. Now for the main event, which is the most exciting part, social studies. So a few things to set it up. So a couple things I wanted to mention. I mentioned this last year, the Massachusetts State Curriculum for History is completely changed. It's different in regards to when it starts, US one and US two, is world, world history. One of the cooler things I thought was worth mentioning is there's a focus on some more practical content, like economics, for example. So when I do our Great Depression unit, I'm going to do a whole unit on taking out credit and how credit works and how debt works, and applying that to their actual lives. And they're going to be able to create like a spreadsheet in which they can actually create like fake debts, right, and actually work their way through it. How would you pay it off? What do you do if you don't pay it off? What's an APR? And I think it's just making the content practical for them and something they can use in real life, which is always exciting. I'll talk a little bit about psychology in one moment. One thing I wanted to mention, which is excellent, we're now offering social studies, social studies class that is equivalent to a Middlesex Community College course. So it's US history. Kids can take the class, and if they pass the class, they can receive three Middlesex credits, which is absolutely amazing. So they don't understand how amazing that is, but I keep trying to stress it to them. Hopefully they'll realize. But that's an amazing opportunity for them. It's also an AP course, so they still have the option of taking the AP test to earn potentially another three credits to maybe some schools that wouldn't take the Middlesex transfer credit, which is exciting. We have a new textbook for government. We got a new US history book last year, which is online, which makes just the content way more accessible to kids. It provides tons of visuals. They can do all their work online. They don't need a physical book anymore. They can do it anywhere. And now we have a government book that does the same exact thing, which is an awesome resource for us. It also has something that's really unique, which is audible. They can just play the chapters for them. They can play sections for them, which is always a useful tool. The last thing I wanted to show you was my psychology assignment that a student had done. So we, throughout the year, talked about a lot of content in psychology, and one of the units we talked about was stress and health. And at the end of the year, I said, you have to make a practical project which can be used in like society. So this young student, Kaylee Walsh, she's currently on dual enrollment, she made a children's book about stress and health. And it was amazing, right? It was unbelievable she did this. She obviously put a little bit about herself in the back as well. So I'll pass this around so you guys can take a look at this. Again, I think this is what education's about. It's not just about content. It's about turning this stuff and actually making it so you can use it in your real life. And she displayed that. I made a book that was approachable to young children about stress, which is pretty amazing. So I'll let you guys take a look at that, and if anyone has any questions for me. Yeah, please.
Through the chair, Mr. Massa. I went, I've been going to the National Park Service in Lowell. They've had talks and tours. And I went on one on this past Sunday, and they had two indigenous people that spoke. And they do go to high schools. They come in for the day. They've been going to Tuxbury. Every year they get invited. First school they got invited to was Bill Ricker. They went there once, and Bill Ricker never invited them back. I wonder if there would be any interest of, interest in having them come in. They, they give, they give a good presentation of what is going on in their community in Lowell area.
Yeah, that's through the Lowell Park Service. Okay, I'll have to look into that, absolutely.
I can, I have the information. I always can
Yeah, absolutely.
Catch up with you.
Yeah. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I love that, also, because one of the big 21st century skills they talk about now is that students understand they cannot be content creators, you know, just thinking and actually creative themselves. I've met two lady band members who was doing that. So it's an awesome project. Moving on to Mr. Rochon.
My name is Mr. Rochon, Derek Rochon. I'm the Cluster Chair for Technology and Art, which is kind of like STEAM, everything put together. Because we are technology, I could not have a, a handout, so I am going to hopefully quick PowerPoint. As soon as we'll tell you I talk a lot, so I will try to make this as quickly as possible so we don't be all night. Apologize for anybody who's in, you know, the seats that are [inaudible]. Sorry, should have taken a second. I didn't want to interrupt with all the cameras and so. But, so our cluster consists of advanced manufacturing, biotech, design and visual communications, engineering, programming and web, and art. So this is, I'll start through here. Okay, good. So our first, I want to make sure everybody can see who our teacher is also. So I want to make sure the contact information, especially since this is, you know, being recorded, and everybody can see who's who and who does all the work actually on the ground. You know, I'm just representing what they actually do. So, all right. So this is what our advanced manufacturing area is looking like. We have a lot of new equipment that's in there. I'm going to list off all the machines that I do not know what all of them do. I'm not going to pretend. But this is what a full-scale machine shop looks like. It's amazing what goes on in there, what they can actually produce now. So some of the highlights of the program is that they have actually increased enrollment
So, some of the highlights of the program is that they have actually increased enrollment. They have now a Tesla height, precision height gauge, which is an item that was required for the industry, and the advisory is surprised they didn't have one. And thanks to what goes on in this whole giant process, they now actually have this item in their shop, and the kids can actually be working as fully as the industry is. In addition, they have overhauled their curriculum, as a lot of our programs are now doing, is overhauled the curriculum to actually follow along more of the state standards. And we also have improved the roof project, they have now air conditioning, which allows us to have for nighttime and summer programs in there, that are more comfortable for people to sign up for, and new LED lights throughout the whole area. All right? Biotech? Oh, sorry. The students have just did a BioRad thermocycler, which is basically does RNA, RNA, as you can see here, RNA typing. It was the first time it's ever been done here, the show of tech, this technology. And also, vertical gel, gel protein electro thesis, or cage. Both of these are done by students' work inside this now program, and they've... Oh, sorry, this is moving quickly. And they've also placed in a bracket for a CO2 container that actually contain better types of, basically, as he was explaining to me, different cell types. So, we were easily able to keep regular bacteria. And now, they can keep, which is called advanced eukaryotic cells, not just prokaryotic cells, which is simple bacteria, but eukaryotic cells, which are basically like us, so you know, advanced life form type cells. And they're able to now keep them with this in their shop for more, you know, studies for kids, they can do more advanced studies in their area. My shop, Design and Visual Communications, this is Nathan and myself. Some highlights of our program, we are now 42 students, not counting our freshmen, who may or may not get in. They're one of the largest our program's had in a very long time. Freshmen are currently going through the one-day exploratory, this seems to be of good interest in the program. We have now four transfer sophomore students that joined our shop, which now brings us up to 19 on that week, with 10 seniors and two postgrads. So, we are actually at a point where we don't have enough computer stations, so that's actually a great problem to have. Our program is growing. So, that's... We're actually solving that problem immediately, but it's wonderful to have. We have, with the two tables borrowed from another program, programming web, actually, we are actually now setting up new computer stations for those students, and with additional tables for more expansion, depending on how we do more recruiting. We also redesigning our curriculum to basically work within the early college program. Mr. Massa talked about the college credits for Middlesex Community College. We are hoping that with our curriculum that you guys approved today, that we're able to... We already have one course in with Middlesex for approval, we're hoping to get, with working with Ms. White, hoping to get more. So, kids will actually be getting college credits in our program. And so, again, like history, they would be graduating with credits in Design and Visual Communications that they can actually use at any college they go to. Lastly, we have, what's it called? We've done a different type of thing with our software. We have now Adobe Creative Cloud accounts. Dr. Heinrich actually helped us out with this greatly, and now, every freshman that comes in, while they're exploring, have an account that they can actually access at their house or in the school. So, depending on whatever device they have, they can actually do the work, and our students actually can do work at home. So, no longer do they have to just wait and do their work in the shop, or come after school, they can actually work at home if they have the equipment, and produce whatever they need to do. Some highlights from our shop, it's easy for me to talk about this, if it is my shop. We worked with, all last year, DESE for the Amazing Educators Campaign for the state, and which the students worked on, billboards, bus ads, anything that the state needed for the amazing campaign. And then, it ended with Kairos, which was an educational seminar that all of our kids were invited to. They'd done all the marketing, table tents, banners, anything that the commissioner needed for the kids to do, we actually did. On top of that, we have had a good year of skills. We had basically... Sorry. We had three... We swept the design competition, having three winners, gold medals and silver. And then, we also had gold in bronze in photography, and silver with... in states with career pathways. So, ours... We did really well. It's the best we've ever done in skills. And lastly, Logo was won by the Chelmsford Farmers Market, who picked Macy Mayer as our... She was a sophomore, now currently is junior, for their logo. So, she won that contest, and you'll be seeing her logo at the Chelmsford Farmers Market now. Nope, fine arts. Fine arts is Ms. Robin Vanico, who also will teach programming web, so she is in our cluster as elective also. She is basically doing, taking the kids on trips and understanding how murals and art works together. You see, doing a lot of hands-on art, using manipulatives. She does a large section in art history to help kids give a grounding in art, and how art has changed throughout. And she does a large-scale project at Edmonds Art, Fine Art Expression, where the kids actually do projects that they express, they use a different type of... They're able to pick the type of art area they want to work in and medium, and they can do self-expression that way. Engineering Academy. Our new teachers, Sam Hummer and Mr. Rupucci, are the two teachers leading the area. We have some pictures of students just kind of working in the area. They also had a gold medal winner for Nationals, which I think is the first time we've ever had a gold winner, gold medal winner for Nationals. And Information Technology. And Jason was from their department. Engineering is, works pretty much hand-in-hand with advanced manufacturing, also, the two departments. It's one can dream it, the other one builds it. It's actually pretty amazing, the relationship between the two. Sorry, programming web just jumped. Programming web is Mr. Gold and Ms. Robin Vanico, once again. This is the curriculum that he, that the two of them have been teaching, going from cybersecurity to Harvard courses, which is this one right here, to Wix, Evenflow, all these languages that they are teaching their kids. So, the curriculum is built up in basically class structure, where they're learning different parts of programming. And these are a few of the competitions that they take part in during the year, and projects that they're working on. The hydroponics, which is actually pretty interesting, using computers, working with plants and animals, creating an environment that is self-sustaining, using, you know, animals, CO2, carbon dioxide, and oxygen, and working back and forth. And they actually just also got a farm bot, which is a robotic farmer. A lot of... So, the kids will be programming the farm bot, and it will be doing tons of the work of managing the plants. It visually looks at them, tells them whether they're healthy, the kids program what they're looking for, or the plant type. It plants the seeds, waters them, it's pretty amazing. It does the lighting. It's one of the ways the future of farming is happening with, I don't know if anyone see the farming that's happening locally, actually, in box farms, that they have three different levels of farm plants that they grow in very confined areas. They talk about that being one of the futures of farming, of confined farming. Last is TV Media. They have had kind of a... Sorry, I apologize. There we go. All right, they've had kind of a facelift inside their program, painting, some work on the area. It's beautiful inside, if anyone gets a chance, I'd recommend taking a look inside it. They set up a couple of different areas for student learning. One is more of TV base and sound room, another one is more of a theory room, and they also have the theater in the backside. A couple pieces of new technology they have is an Oculus Quest virtual reality headset, which allows you to do 360 videos, and a 6K digital camera, which is the state-of-the-art equipment. So, again, they also had a great year in skills, with Brian and Olivia both going to get gold at states, and then seen seventh place in Nationals. And Emily also won a director's award last year. That is about it for me. I apologize for taking up too much time, and some of the errors there, but...
Do you have any special recognition for students that are here tonight, and staff from TV Media?
Yep, TV Media is actually responsible for all the stuff they're doing here tonight. Actually, it's two of the... At least, one of the students from... Is here from the gold states, in seventh place, right there. Thank you, guys, for, you know, everything you do to allow us to do what we do, and that's what's really important.
Thank you.
Thank you, Derek.
Thank you very much. So, moving on to our informational memos here. We were lucky enough to host parents' night on Wednesday, October 2nd. It was a great night, we changed things up a little bit this year, because when parents were not meeting with their students' teachers, we actually had some great presentations in the auditorium. We got in a representative from Massachusetts Partnership Youth, who did a parent presentation on vaping, what the dangers were, what to look for, what parents could help their kids to not vape anymore. Then, we also had one of our guidance counselors, Mr. Cardy Williams, who did his white doctor high school presentation, where he talks about all the opportunities that we offer to kids, once they graduate, whether through college, career, or the military, and how parents can go about helping them to successfully enroll in their areas. In addition, I gave a very brief presentation on the 15th anniversary, how to download our vaping app, which our volunteer here already has, on multiple devices. So, that was that evening, and it was a great success. And moving onward, we have Ms. White, who will talk about our recent...
So, I have some results in Word docs for you to look at. The first thing I want to draw your attention to is the memo that I put in there with some summary information and some key takeaways, which the first, most important takeaway is that you cannot compare results from this year to last year. The state is stressing that, this is a different test, different format, and they have changed the way they are reporting the information. For example, I... There's an analogy that I'm using that I cannot take credit for, I have stolen it from somebody else, but I really like this analogy, because I feel like it illustrates very well what the state has done with the advanced category. So, imagine a gymnast. Once upon a time, a gymnast would do a perfect cartwheel, execute it absolutely textbook perfect, and they would earn a perfect 10 score for that cartwheel. That was the advanced category. Now, the state has said, "That perfect cartwheel is no longer good enough." That is the expectation. So, now, to get an advanced score, you must exceed that expectation. In fact, they changed the name of the category from advanced to exceeding expectations. So, if you are that gymnast, you now have to do the perfect cartwheel, a backhand spring, a front tuck, and a somersault forward roll, in order to get that advanced category. Okay? So, across the state, the number of students that are in those overall advanced categories has been reduced, but that is by design by the state, because they wanted it to be an exceeding expectations level. The goal of the state is to move more students into meeting expectations, and the idea being that if you meet expectations, that is a measure of college readiness, where at some point, the state colleges are going to use that measure to replace the acuplacer exam. And they're even hoping that beyond Massachusetts, at some point, that could become a replacement for acuplacer as a measure of college readiness. So, that's the first thing to remember when you look at the results right there, that the goal now is to get more students into the meeting expectations. So, when you look at our scores, our overall accountability, we are not requiring intervention from the state, which is good, that's the same level of accountability as that we had last year. And if you compare, the important thing for us is to compare us to the state averages. So, I've given you our results in Word docs for our English test and our math test, and if you look at our English and our math results, they are... She can see those over there. Or anything?
No, it wasn't.
Okay. So, our English and our math test results are on par with the state averages. Our math is a little bit, little lower there, but not by much, it's pretty much on par with the state. And then, I put together a rubric for you as well, to look at the accountability indicators. There are multiple different levels of account... Multiple indicators they use to calculate our accountability score. The majority of our accountability measures are based on our MCAS performance. Seventy percent of our accountability, in fact, is based on our MCAS performance. In the chart that I created for you, I broke down each indicator. The yellow block is the state average, the circle is the... Is the show of attacks, overall score. Now, when they also compare, when they also create our accountability rating, in the previous version of accountability, they always talked about the subgroups, where they would look at your, how your performance of your special ed students, your performance of your minority students, the performance of your students that are economically disadvantaged. Well, not all schools have all those different subgroups. So, for example, some of our racial minority populations are very small, so we couldn't use those as part of our comparisons. So, what the state did was, they said, "Well, every school has a lowest performing subgroup." So, they created a lowest performing subgroup for every school, which is the bottom 25%. The students that perform at the bottom 25% on English and math. So, when they do accountability, they look at the total students, and they look at the bottom 25%. So, those students who score in the bottom actually count twice in accountability. So, if you notice in your chart, in red, I marked where in the show those lowest performing students also scored. For the most part, we're on par with the state averages for the... For the students that are in the subgroups, for the MCAS performance. We know the area we need to work on, which is math, that we need to do some work with, and it's the study that I already met with. It's not just students, but all of them, and what we do across the school to improve the achievement on the MCAS. The other indicators that actually make up 30% of the accountability score, we rock. We are way above the state average on all of those indicators. The chronic absenteeism, advanced coursework, high school completion, dropout, extended engagement, we are way above the state average on all of those areas. It's something that we take a lot of pride in, making sure our students are here in school, that they graduate, that if they leave, that we find them and bring them back. We take a lot of pride in all of that. So, we get a lot of points for that piece of it. But, that piece is 30% out of the total, so we need to work on that 70%, bringing it up, and accountability will keep going up.
Any questions, folks? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll talk about our extended school year program.
Yeah, there are brackets.
Yes, I'm sorry about that. Just make sure, if you have a chance, to check out the pictures in your board doc memo, and I'll speak to those in moments. So, it's now, you know, a couple of months have gone by, but I just wanted to sort of bring to your attention some of the wonderful things that we're able to do here, because of your support. And one of those things is an extended school year program. So, for the second year in a row, we were able to offer a transition skills-related, or transition-related skills program, I should say, over the summer, kind of running at the same time as summer school was already running, but later in the day, so that we can accommodate some of those students that may have needed to take summer school as well. And so, what we would do is, we would have them come to the school. So, the first year was a little bit different than this most recent, last year. But, we have the... But we have the, uh, speech and language pathologist, I don't know if you've met her before, Jennifer Botland, and a special education teacher, the last year has been Carolyn Quinn. She's also a science teacher. And between the two of them, they developed this transition related program, um, kind of around job skills, post-secondary training, things like that, to sort of mirror some of the other programs that are being offered in our communities and also to speak to the needs that some of our students have. So it's a very small population of students that we've kind of targeted with the support of the special ed teachers. When they're in classes, they make recommendations, we talk to the parents, to the families, to the students, kind of get their buy-in because it is four weeks of the summer, um, three days, three days a week. And they, you know, they participated in all sorts of activities. Like I said, it really morphed over, you know, the two years. But in the first year, it was more sort of school-based where they were kind of in the building more. They got some of their community experience while working with some of the other administrators that were in the building, doing some work around the building. They went on to the community a little bit, but not quite as much as they did last year. Last year, we were really fortunate. Um, we reached out to area shelters and senior centers and, um, and they really, people were very much interested. So we formed a partnership and a relationship with, um, the Chansford Senior Center, um, with the Nashua Soup Kitchen and Shelter. And then, um, to kind of wrap it all up, after the four weeks, um, they did a, uh, an escape room in Westford. They did the Lost City of the Lucky God, and I can say from personal experience, it's not easy. I won't say who's on my team, but, um, but, you know, it is, it is not easy. And so I remember after we experienced ourselves, I went back and I asked Jennifer and Callie, Carolyn Quinn, and they, I said, how did they do? They said, they did great. You know, they really were able to see some of the things that maybe we hadn't seen ourselves. So, um, but truly the experiences that they had out in the communities in terms of working with the different populations, the adults at the, um, soup kitchen and the shelter, and then in the Chansford Senior Center where they really interacted with some of the, um, with some of the adults there and participated in their, um, activities, like they, they had different kinds of days that they would actually ask for us to bring our students there. So it really, it really meant a lot to them to participate in that way. It also helps support their, um, you know, need for some sort of training around language pragmatics and social interaction of the thing, kind of speaking to that post-secondary transition need. Um, and it did help too with some of the job-related skills that they, um, were able to obtain in, in with those experiences. So, um, and, and finally, they were able to receive some community service hours too, which is also a graduation requirement, so that was a nice thing. So hoping to do it again next year, even this coming summer. And we have probably, I think we kind of proposed it to maybe a dozen students, and I think we ended up with, you know, maybe seven that came regularly. Um, and you can see the pictures of them. I think the first picture is the Nashua Soup Kitchen and Shelter, and the second picture is actually the escape room, and then the final picture is the Chansford Senior Center. And so if you have any suggestions as well of anything that you think might be, um, a worthwhile experience for them, please feel free to, you know, reach out to me, you know, you know where you can find them. Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now Athletic Director Mr. Creed is going to talk about our fall sports.
Well, wrapping up, uh, fall sports, we'll be, uh, starting winter sto- winter sports the Monday after Thanksgiving. Uh, at this current time, I know DJ kind of covered a lot of what we meet before this and kind of update all the sports and things like that. Uh, but like I said, this time we have our senior nights coming up. Golf is already has, had theirs already, but, you know, still a good chance to go out and see the kids. It's a gross, a great experience to see, uh, the seniors hand over a rose to a family member that's, that's last night to show all the sacrifice that's gone through the four years. Um, but I also come to you tonight asking for permission for something. Uh, the league has come to us and they currently have seven teams that do indoor track, and they're looking for a school, one of the, one of the schools in the league to join, uh, to make it an even number so that schools don't take bye weeks. And indoor track, to me, it seems like a perfect fit for our type of kids. Right now in the winter, uh, we don't offer as many sports as we do in the spring and in the fall. That's why we see participation, like right now we have 318 student athletes, and last winter we only had 208. So that's 100 students that drop off. And a lot of it is that the sports that we offer right now in the winter, hockey, basketball, wrestling, they're like skill specialized sports. And it's hard sometimes for students who have never played a sport to jump into one of those three, uh, whereas indoor track is kind of an opportunity to stay in shape, to exercise, and gives the opportunity for more of our student athletes to stay in shape and play, do something in the winter to keep involved. And we all know the winter is the hardest time, uh, to keep your weight off and stuff like that, um, you know, just to find time to exercise. And for some of our kids, you know, they come to school in the morning, by the time they get home to town, it's four o'clock, and, you know, they're just, they're looking for an activity to do. And I think with the league needing a s- a school to kind of help out and make it even numbers, like I said, there's seven, we would be the eighth. Um, it would be a great opportunity, um, to add a sport, to give more of our student athletes a chance to, uh, participate.
This is not a league that we're currently in.
It's the league we're currently in.
Is it?
Yeah, yeah. The vocational league we're currently in, the CAC, the Commonwealth. Uh, for indoor track, uh, there's just one, and the other sports where you are split up between large and small. How do you play your first?
Um, where will the meets be held? Who has the indoor track?
The meets are at Lindtac, um, for all the teams, they all just meet there. So you play every team in your league and then they do one league meet. Um, it's more informal than, uh, track is, the actual outdoor track. Uh, it's more, you know, it's like you kind of pick your couple of events. There's a time limit on it. They run from four to seven o'clock and that's it. Um, so it is a little, it is different than outdoor track.
Lawrence, please.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Creed.
Yeah?
Uh, how does one practice for indoor track if one doesn't have an indoor track?
So, uh, well, a lot of, a lot of school, believe it or not, Lindtac's the one that has it in the league. So what I've been talking to them a lot about is the hallway and the fitness center, uh, which now that we have built a fitness center a couple of years ago with all this equipment and stuff, uh, we'll be more apt to be able to use it.
So we'll suspend the no running in the hallways rule for them?
Well, we kind of do in the winter for wrestling anyways. I don't know if you've ever, you know, seen the kids with the trash bags on trying to keep the weight at where they're at. Uh, so we use the bottom bowl, um, you know, rectangle around here, uh, for running in the halls and stuff like that. And the, obviously the lifting equipment would be, uh, very helpful for anyone who's a thrower, things like that. Uh, we have a lot of, uh, jumping and plyometric equipment for the, a lot of the, um, jumping events that occur in there because there is the high jump, there's, you know, triple jump and hurdles and stuff. We already have all that stuff to practice with. And then, you know, to be honest, if we get a winter like last year where there's no snow, we can still go outside and use the track. Uh, you know, can't guarantee that.
James, in terms, in terms of your timeline, if you bring forward a formal proposal to the school committee in November as an action item for approval, will that give you enough time to do what you need to do?
Yes, um, you know, they're kind of just in need of a school. Uh, so right now they have a schedule where the one team has a bye week every week and all it would be is that we were just filling the bye. Um, so the time would not be.
So you would, you would be okay and we would still be able to hold that slot?
Yep, and yep, we already have, you know, they wear the track uniforms. We already have everything.
So financially, what would you anticipate this would be?
It would just be the driver, um, so we would need a driver for every 14 kids is our ratio. So that would be, um, I think the driver, each driver sits approximately 12, like 1,200 and maybe $6, something like that.
And funding source would be?
And we would be using, well, the fund, the extra money that we funded from the golf tournament, things like that that we do in athletics.
So your fundraising revolving?
Yes, yes. Athletic revolving.
I'm gonna move this as an action item with the permission of the board because we've really not posted this, and it does involve off-campus travel as well as funding sources for a formal action item in November. Uh, and that way we'll be able to take care of business then.
Sounds good.
Any questions, gentlemen? Ladies?
Just one last question. So, so just to hear that again, you said it won't, it won't penalize us if we hold off. All right, just wanted to make sure, right? Yeah, meaning so that they don't need commitment before November?
No, they...
Okay, cool. Thanks.
You don't have any other questions about athletic?
I have one question. So I thought you initially said that it was going to be just indoor track, but it's going to be track and field, so it would be all?
They do, so like, they can, not all the field events, they do cut some off, um, but they do have like, um, you know, certain jump events and stuff like that. It, it, yeah, discs. They have an indoor disc, indoor, uh, we didn't go shot.
Probably don't do the javelin in diverse.
Do pole vaulting, you know, we don't do that here anyways, but they, I don't think they have.
Do high jump, track, disc.
Yeah. So there's something for everyone, kind of thing. It just keeps a kid involved.
Sure.
Yeah, triple jump.
Do you have a question?
Chris?
I, I would recommend it, um, coming from, uh, Air Shirley where my daughter did indoor track. It's well worth it. We had to go to Fitchburg and go to Holden, and those are the two sites that Air Shirley, that district would use, so I would strongly recommend it. It's a great program.
Any other questions for our Athletic Director? Oh, I haven't even looked at it yet.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Now I'll turn her over to Kyle, or, oh, sorry, Jovi. I'll turn her over to Jovi. Uh, she's probably the...
That one's a lot different with the other ones.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Hi there. So currently we are running a few classes at night for adults primarily focused on career paths. So we're running the construction supervisor license test prep class, which actually finishes tomorrow night. And then we also continue to run the electrical code class for, um, individuals seeking to get their journeyman license and in the state of Massachusetts. With regard to high school age programs, we have drivers at Apple currently on Mondays and Wednesdays, and we just completed the pre-apprentice vocational training program through the New England Laborers Training Academy and the Mass DOT, which fully funds the program. They sent a trainer out to our students. It's a week-long class. It happened last week, and students in many of the construction trades and transportation classes participated in it. And it's an introduction to all of the different trades that are highway safety-oriented trades, giving them an idea of the different opportunities that are out there for them after they graduate. And the, the 30-hour program gives them first aid, CPR, training, they have, um, the ability to add that to their resume. The top two students, based on their performance, attitude, job readiness, um, participation for the week, are offered the potential of a co-op opportunity with the local, um, either highway department. Last year, a student worked for the West, Westford Highway Department or Mass DOT related. And it can also lead to their ability to get their CDLV license, um, for free, their hoisting license for free. And, um, so our top two students this year were a student from Autobody and a student from Electrical from the towns of Westford and Littleton, and they were just informed of this on Friday. So we'll, I'll be working with them to do their resumes, to get them jobs ready for their interviews. Um, what else can I tell you? Post-secondary updates, that's important. So where we are with the programs that we're working toward in the post-secondary realm is we are moving forward with carpentry and electrical right now. We are in the final phase with a deadline of Friday, which we will be meeting with a few little things that we need to submit to them for a final review and a decision on our ability to move forward with offering those this or the next school year. And the early childhood ed, dental assisting, and practical nursing program are currently in deferment while we finish our areas as well as put a few other things together. And I just got an update with regard to the advanced manufacturing. They are finally reviewing that and will let us know what the next steps are within the next few weeks, and I'll keep you posted on what we need to do next.
Any questions? Sheldon?
If, you know, just one, if you knew what the offset was between the free, um, what it was with the apprenticeship program, with the two students got, uh, access to a free, was it license or what was it?
Right, so by participating and completing this program, it's not just those two students. All students who complete the 30 hours are eligible to reach out to the organization. It's Mass DOT funded. And reach out to them and say, no, those two have the ability to get a, a paid-for co-op position. Funded by Mass DOT. All the students, 14 of them, who completed the program are eligible to go forward and ask for their CDLV license. They will pay for the training course and they will pay for the hoisting license as well.
That closes it up. That's huge. That's, that's a huge asset, moving forward with a career path, huge. Hoisting license and, yeah, that's great. Yes, that's great work. Anyone else?
Good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Uh, so to start, I have, the first thing we have on the list is our, um, uh, community events update. On the 28th of September, we participated again in Groton Fest. Uh, I was unable to attend, but Michelle, Jeremy, and Gabby took my place, um, with Mr. Millheaven, and he did some terrible stuff at the table. All accounts saved, it was a beautiful day, lots of visitors. We have our very prominent place right on the house courts. You can't miss us if you go to Groton Fest, so it's actually the perfect setting. Um, and it sounds like it was a really busy day, so that was awesome. As far as following exploratory, Jovi has kind of jumped in with me and actually helped me tremendously running this program. Um, and we've switched it from Mondays and Wednesdays, the 12 to Tuesdays and Thursdays. Um, and the books said, you know, we have a few more kids that can participate, a few more teachers that can participate since they're staying until 3:30 anyways on those days, ready for help. Um, so we do have eight programs up, I'm sorry, six programs up and running right now. Um, and we have actually got about 45 to 50 students. So we have 50 kids that are coming here for free, Tuesdays and Thursdays. Today was the third day, um, and they're going through biotechnology, causeful, culinary, graphics. And then this.
Design?
Graphics, yep. Uh, electrical, yes, thank you, electrical one. Uh, so they're rotating through those programs each for one day. Um, and then, of course, the big push right now is Open House, that's Sunday, November 3rd from 12 to 3. Um, we're, even, we're working within the staff to kind of throw a few more new exciting things, including alumni. Friends and a Showman's jumped on board as well as of last year to start the Alumni Lounge and using their outreach and their connections to get people who graduated back in the building. Um, this is kind of twofold because A, I think we want them to come back and exhibit the pride, especially with the 50th anniversary, but also you would not believe how many people I encounter that come, their kids come here or have come here and say, I graduated too. So it's kind of a great opportunity for twofold, people to come back and celebrate what they have done, but then also see the people are floored by the difference from when they were here before. So, I don't think that works out really well. So Open House, mark your calendars. Um, as far as the middle school visits, we're a little more than halfway through, which is wonderful. I don't remember last week, it was all a big blur. Um, Monday we had Nissat Tissett, Tuesday we had McCarthy, Wednesday we had Hawthorne Brook, Thursday we had Parker, and Friday we had Blanchard. Um, for each of those groups, 92 kids from Nissat Tissett, 75 from McCarthy, 109 from Hawthorne Brook, 57 from Parker, and we rounded out of Friday with 180 from Blanchard. Um, next week we have Stony Brook Monday, which right now is 209 students. Tuesday is a combination of Groton and Littleton, and Friday will be Air Shirley. So, um, we'll see what the numbers kind of look like, and we'll round that out the next time we meet November. I'll have those numbers for you officially and compared to last year as well, to see kind of, make sure that we're on par with the number of students that are coming over. Westford is still sending 100% of their kids, so that's why those numbers are disproportionately large, but, um, they, the kids are awesome, they're super organized, and most visits actually run themselves, so their, those are really good. Um, I also have one presentation left at Air Shirley this Friday, so I'll be presenting it on Friday, and then they'll be coming the weekend after that. And then finally is the enrollment report, the update. Um, this was, as pretty, as pretty as levels we could get, it's pretty close to October 1st, so this is relatively what we're looking at, um, with a grand total of 725, total with District enrollment of 653. Um, as you can see, even with over 200 students from Chomster, that's fantastic. I think that's partially the freshman class, it's a huge jump in the freshman class this year. Um, and we are, as you can tell, solidly over 180 in three out of four classes right now. We're looking at that again for next year, which is excellent. We talked about the fact that we've got bubble years with 200 freshmen, but that maybe balances out on a junior class of 150, 160 to, to have 180 consecutive, I think is, is a great goal and then maintain from there. And really we can only grow, especially with new programs opening and everything else. Um, I think there's going to be a buzz, so that's the goal to keep, 180 or higher in each class.
Any questions? Oh, it's a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to superintendent.
With such a thorough principal report, I think that we've done a good job summarizing all the hard work that's been happening in this building, all focused on our district strategy and our goals. I know Jeremy already mentioned this, but I would like to put another plug out there to make sure you check out our new website. I know a few of you are wondering, where's the school committee link? Again, about us, district school committee, that brings you direct to Board Docs, where we post all of our meetings. We've also moved forward with implementation of Board Docs in all of our committees, so we're using it for just about everything in the building and getting organized through that process. I also encourage you to download our mobile app, if you have not done so already. And for those of you that have a cell phone on file, I did test out today, you should have received a text message from me from our new alert system. If you did not get a text from me on the school committee, then I either don't have your cell phone number, or I have the wrong number, and I've texted someone else who knows. So check in with me if you did not get that text, so we can update that system. I will use that moving forward if I need to get in touch with a group quickly, just similar to an email reminder, but I know that some folks don't get to check their email until the end of the day. So another way to get a quick reminder if there's something coming up. Other than that, things are going really well. It's been a smooth opening overall. I can't believe that it's mid-fall already. The other items that are in the superintendent board are just your typical monthly items, and I don't think need any discussion at this point.
Any questions with the superintendent?
I have one quick question for Dr. Pigeon. The open house commercial and video, are those going to be sent to the...
They already have. So we have several video clips that TV media put together for us and updated the slide, which has the date for open house, and also added a plug for 50th at the end. And it's gone out to all of our cable stations. If you happen to go to the movies in Littleton, you'll also see quite a bit of promotional items for open house, along with our big sign at the Besen Lane Mall again. We've got a lot of advertisement out there. We will be getting the candidate signs soon, and we'll send out an email to you, for those of you who have been helpful in our towns in the past with putting the candidate signs out. That's coming very soon. Kyla or Jeremy will reach out for you to do that. And one other note that I did forget to mention, most of you know, because I've seen you out there, but over the last couple of weeks, I've been in almost every one of our towns at one meeting or another, before finance committees, boards of selectmen. Overall, the feedback for the proclamation has been incredibly positive. We have two towns left. One is Shirley on Monday, and one more town that I won't be to schedule. And ultimately, I think overall, things are going really well. So again, a good fall.
Right.
I just want to make a promise, Mr. Chairman. I saw D-Bus has the magnetic signs, about the open house one there. I saw that this morning.
I'm sorry.
They are doing it. Saw that this morning.
Any other comments or concerns? All right, I'll move into the treasurer's report. It's been sent out to Board Docs. Have you given, ready to copy that? Are there any questions? We'll take questions, and I will turn them into the treasurer for answers and get them back to you as soon as possible. Under the chairman's report, the 50th celebration. Part of the 50th is the proclamation process. We're working on a lot of things that are in the process. We're talking about some shirts with logos that we can proudly wear. Talking about redoing the entranceway, there's a flag park. There's a whole bunch of things in process right now. Chris has done an extreme amount of work on that, as well as the rest of the crew, and most of them are here in the room with me, I think. Juliana, Dr. Pigeon, and myself. Who am I missing out there?
Jeff.
Jeff is out there, Jeremy. So we're working hard. We're moving forward. As things start to get a little closer, hopefully, we will be selling ads to promote, fund a lot of this. But it should be an interesting year. I know it's started already. At the open house, you'll be seeing, I hope, some lapel pins. It'll be out saying the 50th. So if you come by, see me and give me $10, and I'll give you one. Only kidding. Come by and see me, and we'll make sure you get one. It's been a great process, and I'm looking forward to having this all come together. So stay tuned. Are there any questions? We were supposed to have some shirts here this evening, but they're kind of, we didn't make the connection in time. So the next meeting, we'll have some shirts and some other things to look at. The potluck party. We've done this for a couple of years right here in the school. It's worked out well. The administrative team comes, and we have a good time. I just want to make sure that that's something that everyone is still favorable in doing. If so, I'll pick a night and put it out to everybody. It's usually one of our school committee nights that we post, and we have a quick meeting and then move forward. And I guess what we'll do is, did we assign last year, A through F doing this, and the rest of us doing that, and bringing paper plates and stuff?
I think we had a Google donation.
Yeah, we did.
We googled.
December 10th.
December 10th, this potluck. Thank you. The ballots and the sunshine fund, we're down to about $200, so any donation to be gratefully accepted. I want to run by the vacant seats for our alternates. Just for the folks at home, this is a 14-member board that spans eight towns: Shirley, Air, Townsend, Pepper, and then the four original towns, which is Chelmsford, Westford, Groton, and Littleton. We also have eight alternates, one from each town. And part of what goes on at these meetings, the subcommittee meetings, is most of the work that you've seen us talk about tonight is all decided at the subcommittee level and brought forward under action items to be voted on. And currently, we are looking for alternates to fill a vacancy in Chelmsford, one in Townsend, one in Shirley, and one in Pepper. It's a great opportunity to work with a bunch of great people. Every member of this board, our decisions are always based on student achievement. And if somebody's out there who's interested, please contact us, because we'd certainly like to sit down and talk to you about it. And that ends the chairman's ad for alternates. We'll move into the vice chair.
All right. So a reminder, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and School Superintendents' Joint Fall Conference is November 6th to the 9th. I believe everybody that wants to go has signed up. If not, hurry up. How many people are going? That's pretty good. If they pay for my work, I'd take them.
Sam's also going.
MASC bulletin for September, I believe you all get that in mail, so you can all read that at your leisure. Mars information, the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools. There's an annual membership letter there. There's a calendar for all the meetings, and I believe a couple of the meetings are being held here. Yes?
Yes.
And there's a Mars directory of all the folks who are on the board. And there's contacts for every regional school district in the state. Volunteering disclosure. So I just want to let everyone know that I am currently working in the snack shack. I don't take ticket money. I don't take customer money. I only prep, cook, and clean up. So I just wanted to disclose that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Subcommittee goal review, this is ongoing. I believe we're going to have another steering committee meeting to discuss these goals. I believe each subcommittee has gone over them.
You're absolutely right. We will post a steering committee in the not-too-distant future, so that we can look at the goals and come back and have one more last workshop to finalize the goals for the committee.
Did you want to bring up, in regards to the subcommittees, some of our subcommittees have them having problems with form?
I'm going to do that at the very end.
At the very end?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Subcommittee reports, budget and finance.
We met, but this was last week.
Last week.
Everything that last week.
Yeah.
We saw the product of what was discussed.
Warren? We met tonight, and you have the items that were voted tonight before you. Curriculum.
Curriculum met this evening. We already approved the programs of study. And at the subcommittee level, we also approved a new novel for veterinary assisting, The Art of Racing in the Rain, that was made into a motion picture recently.
Equipment and facilities?
We have the items that were presented before the committee tonight, and we also reviewed our FY '20 capital plan and wrapping up the roof project.
Excellent. Personnel negotiations, we've met once.
Once.
We'll probably meet again. I know that there's been some work going on for us to start to take a look at stuff, so stay tuned for that. Policy?
We met tonight before this meeting. We approved three or four policies that we'll bring before you next month, and we're working on other drafts for next month.
Steering committee has not met. There's been no need to call a committee to a session. Mentoring committee is dormant. We have no new members at this time to mentor. Continuing items? Seeing none. I'll move into other issues not reasonably anticipated 48 hours prior to a meeting. One thing that's come to my attention recently, within the last two days, we have two subcommittees that have struggled to have quorums. And the unfortunate part about that is that without a quorum, there's no work that can be done. And so without work being done, we fall behind, because each committee is wrapped into all the other committees. Each committee works off the other committee's work. And so to make the committees a little more workable, we had a quick discussion this evening of policy, and I'm not sure about curriculum. But I would like to have the committee start to think about a way that we may be able to correct this, lower the number of members on curriculum and policy, so that they can attain a quorum to do work. And I'm not pointing fingers, because I want to make sure that everybody understands, everybody in this room is a volunteer. Everybody has an active life. Everyone has to take care of family and work. There are things that happen. And I'm just thankful that we have as many active members as we do. But if things happen, we also have to be adult enough to take a look at it and make corrective action, so that the committee can move forward. Another idea that was floated is to make sure that policy is first, and then curriculum is second, so that it runs through. I know on equipment and facilities, I show up, I go through equipment and facilities. Usually, there's a warrant subcommittee meeting in the middle of that, and then I go into budget and finance. And most of the people on equipment and facilities move right into budget and finance. I think on policy and curriculum, we had an overlap tonight, where we were wondering if we could take somebody from curriculum to make sure that there was a quorum in policy, but we had enough folks, so it worked. I'm not looking for a vote. I'm not looking for any discussion. I'm just looking for people to think about what's the best way for the committee to make good decisions about getting the work done in a positive manner and moving forward as a group. I just want to bring that to everybody's attention, so that we're all on the same page. If you can think of a better way to do it, other than lessening the membership to those subcommittees, or do a trial as, you know, back-to-back meetings, I'm willing to listen to anything and engage in any of those. The chair is a de facto member of each committee. Tonight, I was able to make policy, but I can't always make every meeting, because I have an active life too. So we all need to, we all need to be cognizant of that, and just try to make it easier on everybody.
You're an ex officio of every subcommittee, but not a voting member.
Not a voter. The other thing I want to make sure, did everyone have a chance to sign the cards tonight? Administrators? There's two cards up here. Be happy if you'd like to add your signatures to them. I have to sign them, by the way, before I pass those along. Without any other issues, I think we've covered everything tonight. Thank everyone for working so hard to get us to this point. And I'll call for a motion to adjourn. Second it. Motion's been made, second it. There's no discussion. All those are better.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Pigeon, I did get that at 5:19 at test camp. Thank you.